James, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, perfect. And Matthew, I know you can hear us because we've already...
Yep, all set.
All right, and then in here, we've got Patrick, and Liz, and Scott, and Matt Hotvogner, and myself, and we're expecting Ina's in, and we've got Garrett online as well. So, thanks, everyone, for making time for our first work session. I'm just gonna jump in. So, you'll notice we're sitting around the conference table. I know that some of you are calling in from wherever you are. So, thank you for breaking from what you're doing to call in and join us online. I appreciate it. The agenda is purposely, like, it just said work session, right? There wasn't a lot. So, as we go, we can certainly, as we develop things we want to focus or dive into more, can get a little more detailed. So, I thought we could start off maybe with the, at least with the Affordable Housing Plan. And I can go to... It's the recommendations section. Just so we have the same platform, everybody's on the same, where it's kind of at the same starting point. And then, we can touch on some of the things that were in the drive. I can also let you know of a couple of things that are upcoming later this week, and working groups that I'm part of for additional information that's coming through. And then, maybe we can open it up for questions, and then if we want, start pulling some things apart on the inclusionary zoning a little bit. So, I'm gonna launch ahead. And this is kind of free form, so if there's questions, just interrupt me, right? This is for us, try to figure out where we are and where we want to go. So, there's nothing overly formal. Okay, so, up on the screen, we've got the objectives and strategies from the Affordable Housing Plan, and this was adopted back in July of 2021. So, it's two years old on Wednesday. So, yeah, time flies, right, when we're having fun. So, the first objective and strategy, and this was, this is basically the recommendations section, right, of the plan and our action items. So, it's continue affordable housing programs through the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority will continue to lead the town's affordable housing efforts by managing and maintaining its existing affordable housing units in a state of good repair administration of housing vouchers and promoting affordable housing ownership. So, that's all really, it's Nancy Parent from an execution standpoint, right? She's, we've heard from Nancy, and so she's a staff wave on for the Housing Authority. And it's just whether or not we're gonna make amendments to the code, the ordinance, to start helping with some of those from a maintenance standpoint. 1.1, along the same lines, was continue current programs and explore opportunities for expansion. The Housing Authority should continue oversight and administration of its affordable housing programs, including owning and operating of Maple Village. The senior disabled housing development overseeing the co-op homeownership program, administering housing vouchers. And the town should consider these programs while exploring a range of funding sources, which are somewhat limited. And we talked, so there's the Housing Trust Fund, and that's discussed more in one of the later strategies. Item 2 was evaluate ways to increase capacity to further affordable housing. That was kind of an overarching goal, right, for this whole thing. 2.1 is to reactivate the Housing Committee.
I had a question about that, or a thought about that. Is that, I wrote here, useful or another, just another committee? I don't know, I mean, it says reactivate it, so it supposedly was active. But if it was, went into disuse, was there a reason behind that, I guess?
Part of it is availability of individuals to volunteer to...
No, exactly.
How, right, and so, what, how, in 31, in our town ordinance, chapter 31, it's housing agencies. And it discusses the Housing Authority, and it also discusses the Housing Partnership. And so, it's really, so this said Housing Committee, it should've said Housing Partnership. But it's both, and what Nancy was hoping to do was really blend, rather than have two distinct committees, is blend them into one so that they can operate as one. And we'd have to go to the town ordinance to see, so the powers and duties of the, let me get this right, the Housing Partnership, the purposes, the partnership is established for the purpose of increasing the supply and availability of affordable housing in the town of Farmington. So, there's a rep from Town Council is on, and then, there's supposed to be a rep from Planning and Zoning Commission and the Housing Authority. It had initially been, sorry, it's when the Inland Wetlands was joined with TPZ. So, it would be TPZ, the Housing Authority, and then two representatives from the business community, two representatives of public interest groups, the town planner, and the director, it should be the Director of Community Services. So, it got to be somewhat laborious, and the responsibilities in order to receive initial designation for the Connecticut Housing Partnership Program, which I think ties into our Maple Village, so it tied to some of the funding they got originally from Maple Village. But it seems like in the absence of having a funding source, the need for a regular meeting of the Housing Partnership kind of weaned. And whereas the Housing Authority, it has a budget and is overseeing housing vouchers and placements, and is more regimented, and is handling some more legal work with respect to that. So, the idea, what Nancy was hoping to do is get those two into one. So, if we're looking at, so that would be a revamp of this code, which I can do with her, if it's, you know, something we think is beneficial. So, that's what that is. Sure. So, it's reactivate the partnership, and again, we just, so we talked about that. 2.2, schedule regular housing, maybe partnership meetings to track plan implementation, and that's this plan. 2.3, maintain adequate staffing and skill sets to administer affordable housing programs, which really, the administration of those falls more to Nancy than it does to the planning staff, other than us working with Snowberry Cobble and Cornerstone Development and a handful of others. The planning staff doesn't get involved with that end of the work and how things are coordinated. So, we set, because Snowberry and Cornerstone, and I think Heritage, which one? Have, those are owned units, those are condo units. So, the planning staff is responsible for setting the... Hunter's Ridge, sorry, it wasn't Heritage. Those are owned units. So, the planning staff, when they are ready to sell a unit, they have to get in touch with the planning office, and we set the maximum resale price, and it's based on a formula that's in the declaration that's filed on the land records. And we also have to review any of the purchasers to see if they're a qualified purchaser, and that's based on their income limits. Those income limits, and the qualified purchaser is the same as a qualified renter, et cetera. So, that is the same as what Nancy uses. But Nancy doesn't get involved with the Snowberry Cobble, and we don't get involved with any of the others. There's definitely a separation there. So, some of what Nancy does, I'm even learning for the first time because I didn't understand the full breadth of what she takes a look at. But yeah, anytime Snowberry or Cornerstone, one of those condos change, then we're responsible for the sale price, the maximum sale price, and doing a verification on any of the purchasers.
Maybe I'm jumping ahead.
That's okay.
Maybe you can't answer it, but if we, like, go with an fee-in lieu program, let's say, is the infrastructure in place to be able to manage that? I don't know how quickly, like, those funds build up to a point where you're doing something with it either.
So, we may... Yep, so, the structure's in place because the idea would be to use the Housing Trust Fund.
Right.
So, and we can start to follow up with Joe Sletke, which I have not done yet. Joe is our Finance Director. And so, I would follow up, one of the first things is following up with Joe to see about the management of the Housing Trust Fund, which really falls to the Housing Authority, which is active. So, that's of the two, under that ordinance, ordinance 31. Housing Authority is active, Housing Partnership less so. So, the Housing Authority is active and does meet regularly, and has met more regularly through COVID because there's been grievances, so rental grievances with increasing prices and like, right?
Like the State Rent Commission, is that just part of that?
Correct.
Hi.
How are you?
Take a deep breath, don't worry.
Your head is all out.
I'm seeing all... Come on in, have a seat. We'll tell you what we've did.
We'll tell you what we came up with.
Everyone is magic.
Everyone has a magic, no, everyone has a magic wand.
Yeah.
Just gonna go poof.
Yeah, that's too quick for me. Is it, so Nancy Parent's office, is it just Nancy, does she have staff?
No, she's got, she has staff, and I don't, I don't, so she's had social service staff, and she has senior staff, so it's a senior center, there's two or three people there. They roll to her. There are social services, because she, she coordinates with, like, our food pantry.
Yeah, right.
Right, so, the food pantry folks work hand in hand with Nancy, and the people that come to the food pantry have to be approved through Nancy's office before they can even go to the food pantry.
So, she uses a little sort of calculation more often?
So, it's, right, it's different, but yes, she does. Now, whether or not, yeah, I've seen emails, Tallon, Tallon or Mansfield, has Garrett, which, was it 3 million, they're close to 3 million in their Housing Trust Fund?
I think it's Mansfield has 3 million.
Close to 3, and they've got a new project coming.
Right.
Yes, so, and the housing, and it's how they've got, so, they've got a fee already established in Mansfield, and so, and they were revamping their program as well. So, so that's, and there's different ways to do the fees, as far as whether it's, yeah, so there's a couple of different ways to do that. So, yes, there are mechanisms in place to manage that. I have a feeling it's not gonna grow initially at an exponential rate.
Yeah.
And right now, the need far outpaces the funding that's there because we have not only the, you know, she's got Maple Village, and we have the affordable, the different affordable housing complexes that we're aware of. There's also the cooperative housing program. So, there's an opportunity, what we were looking at is to try to figure out an opportunity for maintenance to add it in to this, into the trust fund, so that it wasn't only for the purchase of homes to add into the cooperative homeownership program, but also the maintenance of those, and whether it would expand to anything else or not, or if it would be just for the co-op program, so.
You have an affordable housing document.
So, we're in the affordable, right, so what we, what I opted to do was a, as a, as a launch page. So, just to kind of launch us, is to start there as a platform.
Sure.
Interrupt as we go for questions and dialogue, we're gonna take side trips. And then, I've got at least one other document I want to share just to let folks know about another working group that I'm working with, with CROG. And then, we can kind of see where we think we want to go. We can dive into some of the inclusionary zoning if we want to at that point, or want a different direction. So, kind of a little free form this evening, trying to figure out, get us all on a platform, and then kind of figure out direction.
I have a question, of course, all right, so we have the plan, right? It was adopted July 2021. It says that every five years is going to be updated for a book debt. We have some interesting numbers in here. Will it be updated for the updated census numbers, or no? Because I think what I saw was 2010 census.
If the census, the census numbers all become available. Because I think some of them were still, Garrett, is that correct? We still don't have all the census data yet?
The census data we've gotten, I just don't think the state has updated their affordable housing percentages yet, based on the change in the census information. I think last time we checked, they're still using the 2010 census for the, for the percentage calculation.
On page 10, I noticed there, I noticed, I read that, it says that, here are my notes of it, let's see how good of a note taker I am, that vacant land that's available in our town is not in an affordable housing zone, is that accurate? Or the housing opportunity zone, so.
Correct, there's very limited vacant land in Farmington, period.
Yeah.
There's only about 4%. So, I don't know if that, so roughly, there's only about 4% vacant land in Farmington. Of that, about 2% is residential, and 2% is industrial, commercial, business.
Got it.
Using really loose percentages. I looked at this, I think, before the last meeting, and I had it down a little tighter, but that's kind of roughly where it is. But because these affordable housing zones have been landed and built, right, there isn't, we have not imposed an affordable housing zone. We can't go through, even when we do some of these new zones, the special innovation floating zone, the medical office research floating zone, right? These were zones that sat on top, but we can't go and change someone's zone without their permission to do so.
Because that's...
Right, so that's, so there is vacant land...
Yes.
That has all these other zoning designations.
Yep.
Also, like, the South Road Opportunity Zone that they just did, they didn't like, well, the middle, the Housing Opportunity District that was on Middle Road was specific to Middle Road and couldn't be applied anywhere else. The South Road Opportunity Zone that they just did, we expanded the breadth of it so that it could hit a couple of other properties along South Road, North and South, but you can't go use that over in Unionville. And then, the only other one, well, there's a couple, there's, there's the Snowberry Cobble, and then, there's one on, no, there's one on Route 6 where the Westwoods is.
Yes.
So, it just kind of, someone would have to do, just don't make the application to change the zone, and then either use the affordable housing zone we have in place, or create their own.
So, I was thinking, and I, clearly, it's not fully embedded even in my head, but to like, take Unionville, the Ryan Building. You know how we had an application, and then we had put on the hold, but we as a town had a floating zone that gives us an option to maybe have the Ryan Building be that, if we can find a contractor that agrees to it, I don't know. I wasn't sure if the towns would ever impose a zone or floating zone. It's always the developer?
No, so that's really what the inclusionary zone, the inclusionary zone can be done a couple of ways.
Totally screwing this up?
No, no, we're just kind of, we're just, I'll come back to this, I'll come back, so I'll keep, we can go wherever, and then I'll come back.
We're starting to tangent anyway, so.
So, that's, well, I was on 11, but that's all right. Um, so, there's a couple of ways to do the inclusionary zone. So, it can, and Garrett, I think you've probably done more reading on this than I have, so I'm gonna talk, and then I want you to jump in. The, you can do an inclusionary zone that is all residential property everywhere, whether it's multifamily or single family, and base it on the number of units of housing throughout the entire town of Farmington. Residential, inclusionary zoning, period, the end. And you set a percentage that has to be affordable, whether, again, it's single family or multifamily. And then, if there's a fee-in lieu option, that they can, say they do a portion of the percentage, then the fee-in lieu is the balance of that portion, or they do none of it, and then the fee-in lieu is the total, right? And there's mechanisms, and it's all outlined in some of the sample inclusionary zoning. Some of them are very detailed and intricate, and some of them are very basic. Stanford is very detailed, Tallon's is really easy. You can also do it and have an inclusionary zone for a area of town, similar to, there's transit-oriented districts.
Yep.
So, you can do that and require affordability over a certain area of town. But any, any of these would be subject to public hearings and public comment from a zoning standpoint, and it would, that wouldn't necessarily, necessarily change, I wouldn't suggest changing the underlying zone, right? Because there's particularly there, there's commercial, retail, opportunity, office, medical office type opportunities in any of the center zones. So, again, it would apply to the housing. Garrett, do you have, I'm gonna stop talking at this point, you jump in.
Yeah, so there's a couple other ways the zone can work as well. One is that we require affordable housing, but we allow a higher density if you include the affordable housing. And then, you can also have the fee-in lieu on top of that so that developers can buy the density, and then that money just goes into the Inclusionary Housing Fund, which is what Mansfield has done a lot of, is they had developers just buy the density. They're happy to pay the fee, they got the market rate housing at a higher density, and Mansfield got their affordable housing money in the fund. There was not, there's that Shannon mentioned, just including it. And then, Mansfield does it two different ways, too. They, you can also just charge a fee, and sometimes also this, you just charge a fee based on either the estimated construction cost or the estimated number of units for the development, that's how you get your fee, that just gets built into you. So, you can charge it on all residential housing, so any new single family we get, you can charge the fee on top of that, and that money just goes into the affordable housing. And I forgot which town it was, but one town does it at the building permit stage, where it's just an extra $5 on top of the building permit fee per $1,000 construction cost. So, it's a larger increase because Farmington's is currently $15 per thousand for your building permit, but that's also another way that you charge that fee on top of all residential construction you get, you can build up the fund that way.
Well, Farmington.
15 per thousand.
I think Rennett was 10, or somebody was a 10 in the inventory.
So, hang on, Garrett, I've got a follow-up question for you, Garrett. So, for the, the housing development they just did, so they, to purchase the increase in the density, they also, they got just market rate housing at the, so they constructed just market rate housing to, and the purchase they made to increase the density, that fee was what Mansfield's gonna use for affordable? Or the contractor, the developer did both, some affordable and some market?
No, so, the one that, the most recent one I'm aware of, which was like last October, I want to say, the developer just bought the density, did all market rate, and it, I think it was, I want to say the fee was close to a million dollars. I could, I could be wrong, I could, I can find out the specifics, there was a large, it was a large fee.
So, they didn't build any affordable, they just, they just bought the density to increase the density?
So, there was an R40, they bought it down.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's high-density housing, because it's, you've got UConn right there, so that's, Mansfield has a, has a big boon, they're actually doing their own moratorium on high-density housing currently, to kind of revamp the regulations, too. But yeah, so that, that's the way it works, so they were able to buy additional market rate units by contributing to the affordable housing fund.
Okay, so there's, that particular developer didn't build any affordable, they just wrote the check for one, I think it was one and a half million.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot.
It sounded like ours with so little space, that sort of structure doesn't seem to work, right? Because now you're giving up.
Well, I think it depends, so, because it depends on...
On the property then.
It depends on the redevelopment, right? And so, that's the wild card, because you end up with something like the Marriott, and that was, there's over 200 units in the Marriott.
So, do you use that as an example, right? Like, inclusionary zoning, X percent could be the big A, affordable, or the K in lieu of, or whatever other sort of calculations. I mean, it's hard to do a density bonus, it's like an existing structure, but, yeah.
Who picked the option, the town? Like, we would write it in the O?
What do you mean picks the option, what option?
I think the developer would.
The developer would approach a piece of land, and which option goes, they would... Which option do they buy in, do they...
Back me up, I'm not, I'm not on your train yet. Listen, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm just saying, back up, you're, you're, like...
I'm solving someone's problem, right?
No, so, which option, what do you talk about, so as far as...
Right?
Whether or not they, they actually build affordable housing, or they pay a fee. So, that's, that's typically how these are set up, is it's inclusionary zoning with the fee-in lieu. So, the developer, we set the minimum, so the town would set the minimum threshold for the affordable housing we want built.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we also then set the programmatic calculation for calculating the fee-in lieu if they choose not to build the affordable housing. Yeah, so that's all part of the regulation, so that's why Stanford's is very robust.
Somebody has, like, private money, too. They were able to raise a shit ton of private money, recording this?
Yeah. It was really for our business, but...
So, I went through everything except for, I did not listen to a meeting with the builders, some meeting that went on for a while, I was like, I did not have the time. But one of the examples was, there's private money that citizens are paying towards an affordable housing city.
Okay.
For the town.
Okay.
Wow, we can have a fundraiser.
Big sales, all right, we got it all figured out.
Garrett, do you know what that is, off the top of your head, for the stuff you pulled together?
I don't remember seeing that.
I don't either, no. I know, I looked it, I, I know what you're talking about, because I remember seeing that and went, huh. And I didn't get a chance to come back to it, it didn't make me pause, but...
You're gonna mess this up and tell me to put this on hold if I am in the wrong place. I was thinking of, okay, let's say we have this one zone, this is what we, everything is this in town. Because I was thinking, the reason why I was thinking that way, not that it is, that's the way to go, is, these ADUs, right, that Accessory Dwelling Units, how do we know, like, they're at a market rate or affordable or not, like, if...
Right, so that's, that's another bucket.
Yeah, okay, okay, fine.
That's okay, that's another, that's another bucket. And that's, interestingly, question that I posed back to CROG today in an email. So, yeah, the affordable housing, accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, right now, we have attached, right? So, we have attached accessory, we call them just accessory apartments, but they're attached.
Yes.
And so, they are... Um, and so they are, uh, they're just organic to that individual home, right? There's restrictions, it's gotta be a relative, it has to be for domestic help, right? There's all of that, so, and there is no affordable requirement for those, uh, internal accessory apartments. So, there's an opportunity to lift, right? The, as part of all of this, we can say we're gonna lift the requirement that they have to be related, they are, uh, hired for domestic service, right? So that somebody within a accessory apartment within their home could start to rent it out, right? You know, a UConn med student, or whatever, um, whoever, doesn't, right? We would have literally no say. Um, the same comes with the detached affordable housing, which we currently do not have at all in Farmington. So it's one, do we want it? Two, at what density of residential housing do we want to start to allow this? At our eighty, forty, thirty, twenty, right? How far down do we wanna go that we're gonna allow an accessory, a standalone accessory dwelling unit on a property?
Does that include like a garage, a studio over a garage?
Yep.
That is, that is considered.
If it was a detached garage, if it's a, if it's detached garage, when you put a studio. But if you put a stu-, well, we've, and that, the gentleman that called in and spoke with us two, two minutes ago, that's his situation exactly, or his sister's situation, is that there's a studio over the detached garage, and they wanna be able to rent it out, and currently there's absolutely no mechanism for us to allow that. So, um, so whether it's a standalone living unit, or a sta- a studio over a detached garage. Now, if the garage is attached, and you put a studio over it, we just approved one at the last meeting.
Okay.
It's gotta be relative.
But it has, right now, it does, it also has, it is correct, it has that restriction to it. So, so then that's commonly generally referred to as an organic affordable housing, meaning that typically these are affordable, and certainly more affordable than a standard apartment, certainly more affordable than the two ninety-nine Colt Highway apartments, any of the new apartments that are coming online, right? So, or there's somebody's college student, or somebody's son or daughter that came back, whatever, different life things that go on. So, they're typically more affordable, or, or would be. Um, if we wanted to have them count towards our affordable housing and under the eight dash thirty G mechanism, then there has to be a deed restriction, and there has to be a deed restriction. There has to be some type of incentive for the homeowner, I mean, other than just, uh, we can say, right now we're already allowing the accessory apartments, the mechanism can be, A, if you want it to be an apartment for rent, then it has to be deed restricted, and you have to do X, Y, and Z. But now the onus is, is the tracking then of that, and how is that managed? And so that's the question that I posed to Crog, that of these communities that have the accessory dwelling units, really attached or detached, are they truly affordable, or are they just the organic affordable? If they're truly affordable, how are they tracking this? So, for us, as we were talking, kind of before we got started, when we do the Snowberry Cobble, Cornerstone, Hunter's Ridge, and those are coming in through the town planning office, right? So we're seeing those, when those, there's a deed restriction. So even if the realtor doesn't happen to pick it up initially, what's happening is we're getting calls from either the closing, you know, an attorney, or somebody calls us having interest in the property and knows it's affordable, and then we, we're able to track it in back around. So very rarely does a property transfer at Snowberry that is done outside of the parameters of the affordable housing agreement, 'cause there's a declaration on the land record that runs with title, and the attorneys are picking it up. And they legally cannot transact this property without having all the appropriate paperwork in place. You can't get all your loans signed off on without having the paperwork in place. So that takes care of that. Um, Metro Realty has a number of complexes, and they are required, so it's under, one is, so Metro has affordable housing complexes already in town, they care of all the paperwork, and in that case, I believe the income of the renters has to be verified annually. And once you go over the threshold, then I don't, I, I believe you're given X number of days then to find you, I don't believe you're immediately sent on your way. Um, but once, you know, and, and so it's one of those that when you're right on that bubble, it's tough for somebody, right? And then it's like, okay, well, great, I just, I got a, I made, I took, filled a couple of extra shifts, and now I've bumped over, right? So there is, there is some allocations for that, and it's, um, especially shift deferential, or overtime, or alimony and child support, whatever. There's, there's allocations for those things, um, within the calculations, but you can end up on those bubbles and bump yourself out of your current housing opportunity. So Metro tracks that, and Metro is responsible, they submit documentation into Nancy, 'cause I don't even see it, they submit documentation into Nancy and into the state annually. Um, so from a rental, there's a whole different ballgame that I don't even fully understand. So I'd have to learn more about that to understand what we're then holding. And then for Metro, it's one thing to do it, right? 'Cause they've got sixty units, or whatever, in a housing complex, and then you multiply that, even if it was just one. But they've got multiple complexes, so they have the systems in place and understand the requirements for vetting new renters, right? 'Cause it's not just the annual, it's when a new renter comes in and it's, you need W two statements, you need tax statements, you need a variety of detailed information, um, perhaps more than you would, I mean, for, you know, an average renter, you certainly wanna verify income, but you're not necessarily going to two or three years of tax statements. So it's a much more onerous process for one, right, for one, for one rental. So it might not be something that we wanna impose, and so it'll be interesting to see what I get back as a response to some of these questions. And I'll dive into that a little more, 'cause that's the other working group that I'm part of that I wanna share, 'cause if there's other things and other questions, then I can get that out to that other working group and see what responses I get back.
Yeah, the, the A, to me, the ADU seem, as the gentleman said, the little A affordable, right? It's a little bit more.
That's the or, 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 organic.
Which, uh, like, big A affordable to me is like inclusionary zoning, and little A is sort of, like, just increasing the supply, or those, like, people wanna downsize their home and, and live. Just quick on ADUs and thinking about, like, Airbnbs, right, and rentals, is, I, I could look, is there zoning on Airbnbs, or how to think about Airbnbs in Farmington?
Just a comment or a question.
So, so there, so with respect to the, hang on, I'll come, so with respect to the Airbnbs, there's nothing in the zoning regulations?
God, I can, I can rent out my house tomorrow if I wanted to.
So, I was gonna say technically no, so if you're, we have how, home, it is not something that we are headhunting.
Yeah, with the.
But if there's, so, but if there is somebody that is repeatedly renting. If, if there is somebody that is repeatedly renting out their home on a week-to-week basis, and they are nowhere to be found, um, and it's causing an issue in the neighborhood, we are gonna be notified and they will be issued a cease and desist.
Got it, okay.
We are not actively hunting Airbnb, Airbnb, blah, blah, blah. I got enough shenanigans that we're tracking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, but no, technically there is, there is no short term. So even with this, then we would, we would require that they are long term.
Yeah.
We would want a long term, you know, at least six months, I, I think would be reasonable, you know, what's gonna cut, in case somebody's coming for the ADUs, that, uh, it would have to be at least a six month lease, that there is not a short term week, that these are not weekly rentals.
Yeah, okay.
No, I was just gonna make the comment, that's interesting that you say that about Metro, and they check their, um, you know, they verify their income, because what I've noticed personally, um, the twenty at Hunter's Ridge, we built that neighborhood, uh, and I lived in one at one point, and I moved out. Um, but I remember we were get, you know, we would get letters in the mail all the time, people trying to get in there, and really there's no turnover. So, you know, I mean, there might be, but I mean, it doesn't seem like the same people live there, you know?
Very happy.
Yeah, and, and they're, you know.
If it's owned, so once they own it, so Snowberry, Hunter's, Cornerstone, the ownership, we check at the time of purchase.
That's it, right.
And that's it. It's the rental is done, is handled because they have to, and I could be off a little bit on that, 'cause again, I don't handle the rental, but for us, right, once somebody owns it and purchases it, you can vick somebody out of their own house, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So they had to, they had to meet the income requirement at the time. So we have some that, right, um, a single man or woman purchases it, right? And then six months later, they get married, I had no way of, right? I, I, I can't verify that. Um, so there's a bunch of, for, for every item in a system, there's a workaround, right? So, and there's, uh, there's, you know, and we hear it, you can drive through Snowberry and you see people, or whatever, different vehicles, different whatever, we hear, we hear it all. Um, but again, you know, you don't know somebody's full story either, right? You're seeing, uh, we see a window of things, so, um.
Hi. So, hi, uh.
Hi, yeah, jump in.
Yeah, sorry, it's a little weird online, should've came in. Um, in my opinion, it seems like all the towns that have seen success have built up a significant trust fund. Um, so that should definitely be kind of a focus.
What? Say that again, Matt?
Sure, yeah, what I was saying is that I was looking at Stanford's inclusionary zoning, it was mentioned by Garrett, um, and, uh, the towns that seem like they're successful in implementing this have focused on building up significant trust funds, so the town, the town can push this, you know, their, their development plan forward better than, you know, outsourcing it to, you know, people that come in.
Right, but it's definitely, right, it's a different, I think it will look different in Farmington compared to Stanford or Mansfield just due to the, just the different population densities of both. But yes, both of them have, um, it would seem a robust balance, uh, that's been longstanding. This is something they've had in place for quite some time, so, um, but yes, I, I think you're right. So that would help with, uh, like, our cooperative housing program, and I think at one point you had asked a question, or somebody had asked a question about how do we get this more, so even, no matter what we do at this particular point in time, whether it's inclusionary zoning, or somebody comes in with an eight dash thirty G application, this is localized affordable housing, right? So if it's eight dash thirty G, then it's, it's really localized, like we're looking at on the South Road development. Um, with inclusionary zoning, it may be a little bit more integrated depending on the size of the development, um, and it'll be different depending upon whether it's a multifamily or a single family development. Um, but to start to get housing incorporated, uh, into existing neighborhoods, really the only way to do that is through the co-op program, and that's then building the trust fund so that the housing authority has the funds to make additional purchases, um, of homes at really what would be the market rate, right? And then it goes through that, that process and the structure of the individual comes in and gets the mortgage on the home, and is basically gets the land free, that's, that's how these have been set up. Um, I believe the rent is whatever the taxes would have been on the, uh, on, on the land, is how that is structured for the co-op programs. But then we run into, we're back to the maintenance, so it's, some of that funding would be used for maintenance, 'cause some of these homes have been now in the program for twenty years, and they need things like roofs and siding, or even, you know, just an updated kitchen, right? Uh, you know, they're just natural things that need to get, um, updated, that assuming the individual that owns it still falls within the criteria of meeting, uh, the affordable standards from an income level, then the thought would be that they would then be eligible for some type of loan or assistance through the housing authority. Um, obviously if that person, again, because it's a purchase, the co-op program is a purchase, um, if they have then elevated their, you know, their status and career, that they no longer, um, meet the definitions from an income standpoint, um, from an affordable standpoint, then they obviously would not be eligible for a loan for any of those home improvements.
So, is he referring to the Affordable Housing Partnership Committee that's on page eleven, or no?
Uh, it's sim- similar, so it's a housing authority, so we had touched on that, so the housing.
That's what this is, okay.
The Housing Partnership, so there were two under, uh, Town Ordinance Thirty One. There's the Housing Authority and the Housing Partnership, and part of the recommend. It's in our town ordinance that there's both.
Yeah.
The Housing Authority is active, the Housing Partnership is less so at this particular juncture. So the idea is to start to combine them, so that there's one group that's serving all the needs. Um, the need for the Housing Partnership, one, it's, there, it's finding the volunteers to staff these, right? It's part of it, and the need for the Housing Partnership has waned over time, it's been more of a, there's a, um, a more regular need for the Housing Authority, and so that's the focus, has been making sure that that is staffed, both with town staff and with volunteers.
Yep, uh, totally, random but related, I love the regulation Talon has, it really is simple.
Mm.
It, this is what it is, right?
Right.
There's no, like, crazy formulas or whatever, I don't know how that would work here. Um, I was thinking when I was reading the ADUs, I used to be, like, really against ADUs. But then, you know, times are tough, I can see people that have a nice parcel, they may have a nice oversized garage, why not turn the space above it for something? But, uh, it would be so nice to count it as affordable, organic affordable. I, I guess that there's no, like, oversight really, but.
There's not a mechanism, if we're, if it's not as Matt says, the capital A affordable, there's no mechanism for us to count it.
Yeah, I, I think too, I wonder if some of the developers rather pay the fee, 'cause there's, obviously the administrative cost every year.
Right.
To, or you have to pay a company to administer that every year, right? Versus you just sort of pay the cost of the business upfront. You know, I, I like the, I think all of us sort of like the fee in lieu, if it makes sense, but we still have an eight thirty G issue in town, right, where we need three hundred units, right? So the goal, try to chip away and get to that ten percent, so someone can come into town and sort of more or less do what they want, right, without our.
With the density bonus before.
Without our regs, so just thinking through incentives to developer wanna do, actually make those sort of big A affordable units, and not just do the freight, or maybe half and half, or just maybe some sort of hybrid mechanism there, 'cause I think we, we kinda want those units.
We don't have tents, right, but we have people on these crazy waiting lists for years.
And I think even in the report, it talks about the folks that are on, there's the low income, very low income, extremely, right? And so, and clearly, and we know what our housing, our affordable housing stock is versus the need. I think there was a delta of like, roughly a thousand-ish or so, and that's earlier in the report on page, like, six, seven, or eight, something like that. So it's there, and I've heard the same from Kathy Greeter, our superintendent, and I actually, I've gotta call, I'm gonna email Kathy to see if I can get some annotated numbers from her. Obviously she's gotta be careful on the, the data she releases and how it's released, so that it's not identifiable, right? Um, so, but she's indicated that, um, the students with need within the school district have grown quite a bit. have grown quite a bit, um, particularly over the last few years, uh, through COVID.
The number, the number, I, anecdotally, just the number of kids, um, getting free and reduced lunch. Um, and, um, just again, anecdotally being in the office, you, you hear stories and we get, the, the rental contracts come in when kids have to register. And we've had, you know, this, this was years ago, but many, it's six, eight years ago, but, you know, and it always, you hear the stories of, yeah, I live at, I live with my grandmother. And then the bus drops them off and then someone comes by and picks them up and takes them to Bristol or New Britain.
Right.
Or there are, I'm sure there are probably some kids that are couch surfing. Some fan, one or two that are doing some sort of couch surfings. Uh, I'm going to be with my uncle for a month or something.
Right, right.
Trying to maintain an address.
Right, yeah. Which we can only, I, I can only do so much about that. I mean, that's a whole other.
Oh, definitely.
That's a whole other umbrella.
I know, but.
But I think just with, just again, or having talked to Kathy, she was really surprised to hear that. She said, what do you mean, you're not hitting, you're not at ten percent? Because she said, we're way over that with respect to the student population that needs, that has a need. And they are measured based on the lunch, right? The free lunch programs or the free breakfast, et cetera. So, um, so I was going to try to get from her, drill down on some of that information. I know she's got the percentages at her fingertips, but I was going to see if I could get her to drill in a little further for me. I don't know if she can without violating privacy, uh, um, restrictions. So, but, um, if, if I can get some of it, then it would be interesting because I'm curious to understand of those students, how many are in our actual affording, affordable housing complexes and how many are not.
That's where they.
And I don't know if she can, I'm not sure if she's able to, and to what, to what level of detail she can share that information. But that's where I'm curious, because I'm curious to understand if that starts to align with some of the information that we have in our report of, uh, a delta in the, the need. Because obviously they're, they're, to a certain extent, they're figuring it out. So whether or not they're paying more than the thirty percent of their annual income in rent or housing. Um, and then their, the need then is being, we need assistance with our water and electric and we need assistance with food. So, you know, if somebody's paying forty or fifty percent of their annual salary in just housing, then something else is getting, getting dropped, so.
Because the, the limits for free or reduced lunch might be different than for affordable housing?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I don't know what the thresholds are.
I know free and reduced is a federal number.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know any, like I, I am blessed, I guess. I am, I have to go there, that I have absolutely no idea. So that's why I think I want to ask some questions and start to get, um, some understanding. And, and just, for me, it was really, it was curious because I know, right? So the school district's struggling with some things on one end with, as it relates to this. And yet we're hearing from the state, we've got to do more and we've got to do better. I'm like, well, there's a disconnect between our school districts and what the state's holding as a number. And I don't know if there's any, that may be a legislature thing, but I think if we can, you know, and maybe that is something that we bring, I mean, we've got our state reps, like, hey, you, you folks need to figure this out. At the same token, if these families truly are paying fifty percent of their, their annual income on housing and that's why they need this additional assistance, then I think, um, you know, obviously there's some merit to that. And then clearly there is some work that we need to do on our end.
I mean, to me, that shows, whatever we do, there's, there's a needs when, whatever we bring towards the public and we have a public comment, and we talk about what's going on in schools.
Right.
Like, yeah, there's, maybe there is a need in this town as we put, whatever we put, put forward here over the next couple of months, so.
Well, I think it's another, it's another element of it, right? So this was one element to see the disparity between the housing availability and the housing demand. But then the schools, looking at it from the school perspective was really, uh, has been, uh, some interesting conversations, so.
When we talk about affordable housing, do we talk about rentals or are we talking about purchasing too? Like, can we, or condominiums or, feel like we're always, not always. There'll be incentive for sale, it's just rental, you know, like metro keeps their properties, right? And manages the whole thing and rents the units. But if somebody wanted, there's a for sale sign behind, uh, or the land behind a thalogy. I think that's, right, that nineteen acres, whatever. Would that be condos and can we say, hey, X percentage has to be affordable or?
Well, that's the inclusionary zoning. So we need to have an inclusionary zoning regulation in order to force that, so yes.
Five percent or whatever percent, right?
So thank you, not a twenty, but I keep, yeah.
No, so that would be the inclusionary zone and, and yes, that is, um.
Is it always five units in one or can we make it three units?
It can be what, so again, so this, the inclusionary zone regulation can be structured however the commission wants it structured. So what would be helpful though is, right, to have one folks to start to take a look at some of the regs that, and Garrett's done all the labor, he said, any of the regs that you have is pretty much what Garrett's researched. And I, and I haven't given you all of them. I've given you a sampling of some of them, um, because there's more. Um, but I need to start to understand what you all think is appropriate from a framework, right? And it can pick and choose, hey, I like this from this one, but I like that from the other one, that's fine. Now, we can figure this out and it doesn't, um, and we're, again, with this work group and I will come back to that. Uh, we're good, we're just at the one hour mark. So, um, I do want to come back to that before the end of the night because I do have a meeting on Thursday with that. That, um, it's through CROG and Sustainable CT, which gives us, um, other individuals to start to pull from, right? And so, and it takes all of this research off of just Garrett and I, it, it starts to spread it out and they're doing it for multiple municipalities then too. So, um, so yes, this can look, this can be however we want it to look like. The fee structure can be however we want it to look like. Um, but with that, and this is another question that I've, I've put back to CROG, is there a tipping point? And so that, that comes to the light touch development.
Yeah, that was, it felt like it was a lot of, the examples were cities or large.
They are, and it was out, a lot of it was out west.
Yes.
Because, um, California, Oregon, next Washington have already gone through this inclusionary zoning wave, whereas it, we're, I guess, a little more new. We're, we're on the start of the wave and they've kind of already gone over the crest of the wave. And so some of this is taking a look at the cause and effect, right? So with anything, right, we do it, we add it with the moratorium, there's a cause and effect. We do, it's physics. I look at anything, it's a physics, right? There's an action, there's a reaction. So I, that's, for me, the light touch density, um, or light touch development, the discussion, the webinar, the handouts, I think it's really important. If we're going to embark on inclusionary zoning, I think it's really important that everyone take a look at that. Because it, it starts to get you thinking about making sure that that pendulum doesn't swing too far, right? So that, yes, these things are good and yeah, this is great. Mansfield has a three million dollar trust fund, but we're not Mansfield. I do not have UConn stores in my, right, in my backyard. And we are not going to be able to put in the same parameters and hold that same requirement. We are not going to be able to set the same intensity that Stanford does. We can't. And that's, so that light touch development really gets you thinking about, okay, if we go too far, we can shut down the development and what we actually create is a further disparity. We get low and we get high and we get nothing in between. And so we've got to be, that has constantly been rolling through my head as we've been going through these conversations. So I think it's really important that everybody take a look at that. Um, and if we need to, we can find other, you know, this is just one. It was from the Connecticut Home Builders Association. It was from earlier in the year, but it seemed pretty comprehensive. They have other resources and I want to say we had access to the gentleman that did the presentation. I could send him an email with a follow-up, uh, questions if needed. Or I've got others that I can poke at to try to get additional information. Um, but that is a question that I've also posed to CROG as part of this work session is like, hey, was there? For me, I refer to it as a tipping point, right? There's going to be a sweet spot-ish. Um, for me, I'd rather aim low and incrementally tweak it if we need to. I'm a, I'm a little bit weary of going too far and seeing everything from.
We need to restrict it, right? We need relief.
Right.
And we approved a lot of units that's skewing our numbers.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We have a problem there. Um, I didn't mean to stop you. I was thinking of Patrick. Patrick, like your background, when you assess a project, do you look at, um, some of the things we're talking about? Affordable housing or fee in lieu or are there things that are better or, uh, better beneficial for you?
More attractive.
No, or?
More attractive.
Right, more attractive, that's the word.
I mean, density.
Density, yeah.
Yeah, density's big. I mean, if you think about it, you know, every house has the same thing in front of it and the, the further apart it is, there's just that much more that you have to assign to that house, right? Whether it be the pavement or the sewer or any of that. So I would say density is the biggest, is the biggest thing. You know, the, the, the closer that you can put the houses, the cheaper you can sell them, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, that makes sense. I, I think it's, I am definitely for identity versus the sprawl or, you know, one house per, eight per, you know?
I mean, we, you know, if you look at, really that's kind of what we specialize in, right? We don't do all of our, I mean, Langdon's Quarters is probably a little bit, that was kind of closer than what we, we were typically used to. But it looks great in there, you know? Um, and, you know, and so that, that's an example. And then you go to Strawfield and it's different, you know what I mean? There, there's a little bit more room in between. Um, but yeah, so to, to answer your question, yeah, density.
The fee in lieu, is that like a normal thing now you encounter or not?
Uh, no, we don't encounter. I mean, we, again, we, we build in few spots, we're just in a few spots in Connecticut. So no, we have not run across a fee in lieu, so.
The horse.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Um. I, I think for me, I already talked about this last time, I think it's more of existing almost commercial buildings converting to residential because there's only two percent of land. So there's not a huge housing development. It's, it's, we have to think about it from that perspective. It's more the areas of town that have those office buildings that maybe they, like you see it in Hartford or wherever, right? When they convert.
We don't have a lot of.
It's not hi, it's not high. I've checked in, I've checked in with Rose, um, and I check in with her every so often. It's been a little bit with respect to the office vacancy rate and, um, yeah, it's not, I can't even, I don't want to throw a percentage out because I don't know what it is.
I'm just having curiosity as usual.
But what she has said.
Everyone is still paying, they may be vacant, but they're paying.
What she has said is that it's, there's a lot of small vacancies. Um, like I'll say, under ten thousand square foot, right? So and for what we're talking about, that's small. Um, so, and it's a lot of, like, there's a two thousand here, there's a two thousand there. There's a, so when you add it all up, it, it's notable. But if you're to look at it on a building per building or property per property basis, it, it doesn't lend itself to, it's, it's not a Marriott, right? At this particular point in time. Um, and there's a few areas of town that were, we've watched just to see what was going to happen. That Marriott corridor, the Farms Springs Road corridor, um, Hartford Healthcare is coming in at one. So we saw that, the other, at the other meeting, right? The house, the sign came in, so they're, they're taking one of the buildings. Um, and Raytheon is starting to reoccupy their other buildings, so, um, not that it's good. Yeah.
No, no, I think that is good.
So, um, but yeah, and obviously it, there is, there's been some dip enough that we all saw it from a mill rate standpoint, right? So there's, like, it's not that it's all rainbows, um, but it's not horrendous either.
Large insurance or, or company leaving an entire building.
It would have been different, you know, if Farms Springs Road vacated completely, we'd be having a whole different conversation.
We saw the refound, right? Residential is worth more than commercial. So if you own one of those properties, at some point, like, can I make more money turning this into residential versus trying to rent it out as a small doctor's office? You think of like the Forest Park, I, I just think of that, it's like a big, there's a lot of small offices, right?
There's one on New Britain Ave, right? That's, um, vacant, that's, that was pretty big or, I remember driving by it. I, you know, I called at one point, I was curious, um.
Down near Route Six?
Yeah, yeah, not quite to Route Six, though.
It's north of Route Six.
Yeah, yeah.
So they've got, actually Mont Corporation is going in there for, they took about thirty, four, uh, forty thousand square feet. So, um, but yes, that, that building is, it was AIG, it had been Hamilton Sunstrand way back in the day. Yeah, um, but, uh, but yeah, so it is. And like I said, I touch base with Rose every so often on that.
I was not, not, I'm just thinking about it, so I'll tell you this, but, uh, the office issue is a big issue just nationwide in cities.
Right.
And, um, so they're maybe, uh, not occupied. So far people have been paying, they're starting not to pay. And the, who cares, right? Well, you know who cares? Our small banks because their commercial loans are typically a small bank will purchase. And so those loans are coming due, like over the next five to ten years. A lot, like a couple trillion of loans are due. And so if they're behind us, that's a big, I don't know, that's everyone, you know? Um, I'm excited about what we're doing. I, I hope we're able to get some of this in place. Um, so, you know, like making things more walkable, like, you know, Unionville, having maybe like a couple storefronts and apartments and stuff. That gets me very excited. Um, I worry about the few parcels of land that we have that are on the market right now. What's the river, not even traffic wise, but how can we offer more affordable housing? But also how can the town benefit, right? So we can pay maybe for, like you said, the maintenance of what we have already, um, and then anything that gets redeveloped. So looking at the affordable housing, are we breaking things, so like, you know, we touched on ADUs, like, are we, is there like one topic we're just going to go in, just that's all we're going to do in the next session or? They told me, I know, I said, I'm going to be late, I'm not going to mess up the meeting, here I am. Did you guys already say that?
Every, every group needs a steamroller.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Normally it's me, so I'm glad, you're all good.
Okay, so, um, that's kind of, so what I was doing at the start was to just go through the action items from the Affordable Housing Plan for the platform, right?
Yeah.
So I think at the end, I, I think it's helpful if we take a few minutes just to quickly go through the rest of them.
Go for it.
Let me touch on the, on the work session stuff, the other, um, working group that I'm part of. So that we can figure that out.
Yeah.
And then, and then find of these action items, are there a handful that we want to focus or one, one or two that we want to focus on and how we want to go about it? And action items for the next meeting, okay?
One quick question before we get started on this, or re, re-entering. Um, said that some deed restrictions were expiring on some of the affordable. Is that, how does that get re-upped? How, I mean, is that a, that's the one thing I, I wasn't sure, you know, we got to insist on that.
Yeah, well, some of it.
Twenty-five? Um, when is, uh, it was in here and I can't remember which.
I don't have it at my fingertips, but yes, um, they are and here, so.
But it doesn't say when. But it doesn't say when.
It's in your presentation.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
It was in the presentation, okay, so I don't have the presentation printed. So, um, it does-
I think it was twenty, I think it was twenty-five or twenty-six or something, that it was, that it was coming, uh, and I can't, oh, I could look through. I was just wondering, you know?
That was in one of, that was answered in one of the questions.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, answer right here, yeah, I did bring that. Um, I don't know if you have that, but that was, uh, February thirteenth or whatever.
Uh, February thirteenth?
Yeah, February thirteenth, yep.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven, the next one.
I thought it was twenty-five, but maybe, is it west one? Okay.
Yeah, tw- two thirteen, is that what you said? Yeah.
On this response- The moratorium presentation?
Response to affordability question.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, what do you call it? Commissioner questions.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
See, I knew I read it somewhere, I just couldn't remember where.
There it is. There we go. Okay. So, Snowberry's permanent, Cornerstone's permanent, uh-
Yeah, it is.
Metro, and Metro also, so Metro renewed. So I can ask Metro how they, what the mechanism is for that. So they renewed, um, to expand an additional thirty years. I don't know what the, again, I don't, because those are rentals. I don't know all the mech-
Okay, I didn't know-
I'm a little bit, I'm learning as I go too with some of this, so, um, but I could easily give Jeff a call. He's been very approachable with any of this, so, to understand.
Something that we have to insist upon, or?
So, I'm not sure how much we can do, so some of it's limited by the Connecticut-
The state, right?
Well, some of it's the Connecticut General Statute.
Okay.
So, and the chief of funding, and the fund, so I, I don't know if we can, so because Snowberry and Hunter's Ridge, and even Cornerstone, which-
Even the new project, there was a forty-year, right, or something?
So on South Road, it's a forty-year. It's a forty-year, which is long when you're, when you're at that end of it. And it's really short when you're at this end of it, and you're going, oh, boy, that's in three years. Right? It depends on which end of it you're on. Um, but, uh, so some of it might be dictated by, uh, the general statute.
Okay.
And some of the funding mechanisms, we may not have a choice. The ones that are permanent are own, are, the ones that are homeowners, home-
Those are the ones with the deed restrictions.
Deed restrictions that run in perpetuity.
In the long run, outside that one property.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
They should be retired, so. The next one. Twenty-one thirteen, I think you're good by then.
Well, there's a twenty thirty, yeah.
Thirty-eight, you know?
Yeah, whatever. Anyway. Okay. We're on page twelve.
The mojo.
There we go. That's okay. So we talked about-
I want more meetings.
We talked about the housing partnership, so I think everybody's pretty set on that, right? And so that's really us, I, I can work with Nancy, I made a note to chat with Nancy about ordinance twelve, which is the trust fund, and thirty-one, which is the housing authority, housing partnership. Um, and then, and that could even come, that could come later, changes, that the housing trust fund would need to change. Excuse me, if we do afford the inclusionary zoning and fee and lieu, we'd need to do that altogether. But the, her, section thirty-one could come later. Um, affordable housing training, and even for staff, the members and land use boards. So that's going to come up again. Um, look, I think CLEAR did some, uh, CLEAR did some, I think they touched on affordable housing in one of them. Um, actually, I know they did. They touched on affordable housing on one of them, and then, uh, in January-
UConn, right, the UConn.
The UConn CLEAR one, right.
That's what that is, okay.
Um, and then, uh, with January coming with the new commissioners, we'll do, we'll do all that training all over again. For those that are choosing to play along. Um, number-
I'm not writing my question for you guys.
Number three.
Yeah, they're reviewing.
So number three is all about our ADUs, right? So that's the, it talks about eliminate the rental restrictions, which we talked about, um, a moment ago on the accessory housing. So, um, and we can also not, uh- So it's, we could eliminate all the restrictions on the ADUs, um, for the accessory, those, uh, the way it's currently worded for the accessory apartments. Um, allow the detached ADUs, and then just review the ADU standards, um, with respect to, you know, our zoning regulations as it's currently written. Um, and we can, we can benchmark it against- I'm sorry.
ADUs are deed it, did it, deed it?
No, so, again, that's where we, we talked about the, uh, organic affordable housing versus if we deed it, the requirements to better understand what each individual homeowner, right? We talked about that if it's a large complex, then you've got a corporation that's handling all this versus individual property owners. And then even, how do we as staff-
Yep.
Manage and track it to say it's currently meeting all the requirements and it counts? So it gets, I think, to start to track these one at a time, not only is incredibly laborious for each homeowner, I think it's going to be very laborious from a staffing standpoint, so.
So, but Shannon, but we can still count ADUs towards our overall number, or no?
No.
Like eighty percent, right?
Unless it's meeting the, all the cora- the parameters of an eight dash thirty G, and there's a deed restriction on the property, I can't. So somebody that already, right now, so, so we already know that some of the apartments in Farmington, right? I'll say are organically affordable, right? There's the apartment complexes that are down by Highland Market, the ones across the street, the ones behind. My loose understanding of the price points of those is that they would fall from, or, if not all of them, some of them would fall to a affordable umbrella. Um, but no, there's no deed restriction. In the absence of a deed restriction, there is nothing preventing developer John Smith coming in from New York, offering ten million dollars to the current owner saying, I want to buy it, and either tear it all down and push everybody out, or do a complete revamp and jack the prices by two, three times. So in the absence of the deed restriction, there's no protection. And I can't, so they, the state won't count any of the organic, because there's, because there's no protection.
Right, it's like it's artificial, I mean, it's started out that way and it's not, it's just-
Right.
In that example, to play it out, if you had inclusionary zoning regulation, that example, would it kick in?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so if John Smith developer came in and purchased one of these, then yeah, he has to play by the inclusionary zoning rules. And from a redevelopment standpoint, absolutely it would.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Right, we can't, we have no mechanism today to do that.
Correct.
We got back to the big A.
Correct, right.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we're going to relax, so we're-
We got half a page.
I'm not counting that, that's fine.
Three, not four.
All right, ADUs, let's say, so those are relaxing on existing? And so what if every person that has a garage right now wants to expand their garage and do that? That's okay? I feel like we're missing an opportunity again with our affordable housing.
I mean, it's, so, so what it sounds like is it's going to be, if I understand this correctly, right? It's, so, it is going to be affordable, right, so it's naturally smaller and-
Correct.
But it's not going to count towards our number, so what are we trying to do? Are we trying to just work with the numbers and, and, you know?
I, like, for me, like, if I just, my focus ranking system, right, inclusionary zoning, and then ADUs, because I think the ADUs, especially detached, is a whole set of other issues in terms of location on the property, like stormwater and all of that other stuff, right? Now, if it was still detached, and we lifted the restriction and said, well, okay, it doesn't need to be like a very restrictive family member, or sort of housing staff, like, there's not, there's not a lot of like land use issues with that, right? It's just a different type of person can live there, and maybe someone can rent it out versus like the separate detached, I feel like is a whole, another month of, I don't know if it's another month of working sessions, but I think there's just a lot more land use engineering stuff going on with that, again, from my perspective.
So we're still not allowing detached ADUs, is that what you're saying? Okay, I missed that.
Well, we haven't, we haven't decided anything. Right now, we haven't changed anything.
Yes, we did, you said it.
We haven't made any.
No, and John, we did not allow-
So this is just the plan, right?
In theory, it just increases the deta- like, in my mind, right, the detached allows more people because maybe you don't want to, you live in this house and you don't want to build an apartment attached to your house. So there's more people are open, like the gentleman from California says, okay, I'm going to build an eight hundred square foot home, whatever, in the backyard.
Right.
Which I think, again, is, is a good idea, but I-
We're not deciding today on ADUs. I thought, I'm, I'm like checking things out that-
You're not just talking about priorities, right? Like, where do we focus our priorities?
No, I'm not, so all I was doing was coming back to-
I read, I read. And then I heard, we're remo- we're removing restrictions, I'm like, wait a minute, we're missing the point, maybe.
No, what I said, I was just coming back to the plan.
Yes, three, section three.
Right.
This is just their recommendation.
This was the recommendation in the plan.
Nothing was acted upon.
Thank you.
It's just the planning doc, right, so this is our benchmark?
Yes.
It's the benchmark for what we can do, so it's suggesting, plan is suggesting, and it's one of the items that, that the commission can now work together as a group, right? So that, we're good. Um, so ADUs and revamping the ADU regulation as it exists, um, with the accessory, internal accessory apartments, and the detached, um, sorry.
I will not, I will speak my-
I almost derailed my, no, I almost tried to, I almost derailed myself. Um, there's a whole conversation going on. Um, so anyhow, uh, so that's, okay, detached, all right, good. Four, um, inclusionary zoning approaches, and this says for multifamily development. And again, so, uh, one thing that neither Garrett or I mentioned, right? So we, I had said inclusionary zoning for everything, um, multifamily and single-family development. And we talked about it can be town-wide, it can be locational, it can be, it can also just be, we can say, you know what? We don't want to touch our single-family. If somebody comes in with a, whether it's a six, uh, uh, six-lot subdivision, or a thirty or forty-lot subdivision, we don't want to touch it. Or we can say, yeah, but we're going to structure it, so it's going to gear it more to a, um, encourage it more for my fee and lieu. Somebody's just going to write the check and make it, make sense to just write the check. Um, um, and then-
Single families are more affordable than a single family anyway, just in general.
Right.
Right, right, uh, and so, and then, uh, so this talks about inclusionary zoning approaches for multifamily development. And then, uh-
I think the, the Torrington ordinance is definitely kind of a good starting point for this. Because it, it actually-
You said Torrington?
Torrington, yes.
So I got Mansfield, Stanford, where did you get your hands on?
Talon. Yeah, sorry about that.
I did see, yeah, Talon, yeah, that's, um-
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good, I mean, it's definitely more apples-to-apples comparison when you look at Mansfield and, and Stanford. And it, and it's simple.
Right.
Yeah, I love that.
Twenty-five hundred bucks a unit one, is that, that one, is that the one Tomo?
Yeah.
Look through it.
Yeah, after ten, it's twenty-five, it starts at twenty-five thousand, then it goes up every, every unit at point zero five percent.
But the way they're written-
If you buy, yeah, it works out to be twenty-five hundred bucks a unit is what they did, and they just came up with a multiplier or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, I noticed that one today, too, was, it's simple.
I think that with like a, a commercial linkage fee or BP fee could fund that trust fund pretty adequately.
Garrett, do you have any idea, do, are we allowed to do the linkage fee? A commercial linkage fee? That'd be a good question for CROG. I may have lost Garrett.
I was just going to say, I don't see Garrett.
So it is, so the linkage fee, and that I answered.
Yeah, I read through and I can't remember.
I remember reading it, but-
Well, I'm not, so- So the, um, the general statutes, the general statutes specifically, so it's eight, uh, eight-two-I, there's eight dash thirty-G, right, but there's eight-two-I specifically allows for the fee and lieu. What I don't know is if there's anything, I want to say this is here at the bottom. So I'm going to have to find out about the linkage fee. Oh, is it up? Question three. Linkage fees, so there's a distinct difference between the two, and there's a link that discusses a linkage fee. So the linkage is for, so the fee and lieu is for residential development, right? And we're saying, we need you to, to provide affordable housing. If you're not going to provide affordable housing, then this is the payment that we're requesting you to do. There's something specifically in eight, in the Connecticut General Statutes that allows us to get that payment as a fee and lieu for the actual housing.
Right.
The linkage fee is saying to a commercial property that says, hey, you're part of the community, and this is part of your workforce, and your workforce is linked to our housing, and this is the linkage fee that we're requiring you to pay. I don't know if we are allowed to do that.
It's in your response, too, I think.
Yeah, that, so I'm not sure that that's specifically, so I'd have to find out-
One time, too, that's like the fee and lieu, it's a one time-
Building a new office building, we charge them a linkage fee. We're going to need more housing.
I found, because I had to look up linkage fee, so I looked-
It's a way to, to do that money.
Yes, it's a, right, it's to, it's to feed the trust fund, um, and again, it's figuring out what that appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, without killing everything.
Right, without just blowing everything up.
CROG is working at this from a regional perspective in terms of language for towns?
So, there's a work group that a subset of the CROG communities are participating in with CROG and Sustainable CT. And there's a group of us that are participating, there's six or, six to eight communities in total that are participating. They intend to, you know, do it, and then, you know, we're, we're the guinea pigs this round, and then they're going to do it again with another group, and then, so, um, I'll, yes, I'll come back to that, but this, yeah, I can ask, I can put that forth.
I think some of this language from a regional perspective, a lot of sense, I mean, we don't, we don't control the other towns, but, you know-
No, but some of it's unique to the communities, right, as to how, so it's how our zoning regulations are set up and how, yeah, so.
That's kind of like from a developer's perspective, like every, you know, every town's got its own-
Oh, yeah.
Unique calculation, it would be-
But that's, that's it for all the building, you know, our building fees are different than, what, Avon's and Canton's building fees are different. Yeah, it's all, the permit process, I mean, other than, if you're near a wetland, you need a wetland permit, and if you're, and then you, a site plan, it's TPZ, like, those things that are specified, the rest of it is kind of, it's a little unique.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right, so, linkage fee. No, that's okay, that was good, thank you.
I, I think both Matts, um, sent questions that were just fantastic. Thank you for doing that. No, you did, no, you did, you did, and Matthew.
I think Patrick had sent some in at one point, too, so.
Patrick, what?
Patrick had questions.
Before you left.
Well, this is back in February.
Forest Hyatt.
Yeah, Forest Hyatt, nice. Okay, so- Okay, so inclusionary zoning, I'm really trying.
You know, we appreciate you.
Four point one.
Four point one, I did, I told you.
Hosted developers panel.
So developers panel, so we haven't, we haven't done that, um, we can, um, what I've done instead was, we've pulled different resources, um, we have, I've got the light touch development, which was-
What touch are you on, four or five?
Four, four point one.
Thank you.
Page thirteen, top of page thirteen.
Got it. Well, that's good. I cannot be on that panel, as a real estate agent, they're putting it out there.
Um, so, at any rate, um, um, so we could, if, so between getting information from CROG and our other neighboring communities and getting the light touch development presentation, um, and some of the other, okay, so if we think, if we think this is what we want, then we could set it up for September-ish.
I would, what do you think, Patrick?
But I, we're gonna need-
I mean, I think they would have some good input for sure, um.
Would people be honest, or would they just be sucking up to us to stay in good graces? That, that, that's-
No, no, I think they would be honest.
I don't know, that's good, no, 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 I'm, I'm-
Yeah, I think what I struggle with is the who.
Yes.
That was gonna be the next question.
That's my struggle, is the appropriate, the I, who, um-
For everyone who is on, someone is not, and therefore playing favorites or-
Um, well, and it's not even that, it's the appropriate who to have, to be able to truly have a candid conversation and to get, um, to get enough mix on not just affordable housing developers, not those that just absolutely not. Um, I want some, obviously, that have some experience.
Exactly.
Otherwise, your questions can't get answered. They don't want to plant it, so I can kick it around, I can make a couple of phone calls to see, I think in order for it to be worthwhile, we need at least three or four people. I don't think I want more than six, cause then it just becomes an unwieldy, not too big.
Is this something that we could go to this group with, here's what we're starting to think, kind of approach, is that what you're thinking, or is this just an open forum?
Right, like a public hearing type of, anybody-
More, more open, I, I think, I think this would be specific to the inclusionary zoning, so this would be, it would be specific to inclusionary zoning and the fee and lieu program, and the pluses and minuses, the structure, the, um, the, how the fees are gonna work, the, is it just multifamily development, do we include single family? Do we do it here at the TPZ level, do we do it at the building permit level? Um, those are some of, like, just the initial questions that come to mind, um, and I guess, are there, are there questions that you think you have, or that, things that you'd like to hear that you're not, that we don't have from having other regulations? And looking at other regulations or even other communities.
Honestly, I think the comparisons to other communities and the material here, I think answers a lot of it from my perspective. What else is doing, and the info that, you know, we're gonna get from this CROG working group, that was helpful, I don't know.
Just a public hearing?
Well, I mean, the developer can come in and give comments during public hearing while we're doing it anyway, right, so, you know.
I can, I can add, let me make a few phone calls and see what happens, where it goes, and then-
Do people respond to surveys?
I know, no, my-
Really, what, like ten percent, I think you're excited if you get back.
The CROG's are at-
I know, I know, and it wasn't a newsletter too, that you can't-
I know, but we're, we're the ten percent on that one.
Thank you.
Um, the, the idea of the developer forum, I, no, I, I see the value in it if we can get some feedback, because if we're all, you know, we're all in on this, and all the developers are like, that's nice, you know, that, that's why-
Well, that's why we're not gonna go in with like a plan of where we're at.
I, I, I wouldn't want to spend all this time, and then-
It's who you invite, like you said, who the audience is.
Well, that's okay, I mean, it's, we could, I, there's a couple that come to mind that I think I could at least start with and see if they then have one or two that, um, are reputable and we can, again, I think, have a, an honest conversation. Um, but it would be handled, I would personally handle it like a work session, I might thought it would be, we'd have, you know, the questions upfront, let them introduce themselves, what their background is, and then, hey, say, we'd like, you know, hey, this is what we've looked at, so whether or not it's looked at Talons, and we're leaning towards Talons, and we like that structure, or, you know, what are your opinions on these? If you've seen them or other ones that you've worked with, things that have worked, things that haven't, um, to hear from them.
So something we're gonna-
I will see if I can get, but like I said, I think we need at least three to four, and no more than a six.
I'm jumping out to number five, we can't get across, number five, and the, the development process and the special permit process, and that's what they think about that.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Jumped ahead, you jumped ahead of me. That's okay, um, alright, so four, four was all inclusionary zoning, so four one was the panel discussion or forum. Um, or two would be to actually adopt the regulations, which, uh, ties to the fee and lieu, adopt inclusionary zoning regulations, four three is flexibility, uh, I'm keeping up. Three is flexibility in housing trust fund distribution, so that's, we talked about the maintenance, right, so we would need to change the town ordinance to allow for the, um, flexibility for maintenance. Or four is the revenue stream for the housing trust fund and using the fee and lieu, right, which again, goes hand in hand with the inclusionary zone based on what we've seen, um, and then five is reduce restrictions for multifamily development, um, so less restrictive zoning. So some of that then starts to come into the density bonuses that are inherent with the inclusionary zone, in my mind. So due to like, lack of vacant land in existing multifamily zones, which, again, most of these then would require zone, they're floating zones that require zone changes anyhow, I don't think we've got vacant land in a multifamily zone. Um, they require a zone change or special permit, as that's noted, and the town should establish less restrictive zoning process for multifamily development. Um, now what you, we could do, again, this comes into some of the organic, um, organic affordable or lowercase affordable, um, wanna say in the light touch development presentation, uh, that talks about, uh, New Jersey, one of the communities in New Jersey autumn, went through and automatically allowed, instead of just single family homes by right, two family homes by right. So it's single and two family homes by right, every zone, across the board. So, again, that's gonna be in organic, you're not gonna get a capital A, affordable housing on that. But it's interesting to, to see and look at that study and see how that shifts, um, and what, you know, and I haven't reached out to the city, I haven't reached out to, I touched base with them, nothing, it's just what was in that, that study, and I'm pretty sure it was a community in New Jersey, um, so, I think initially we, I would suggest we would hold off on something shifting a pendulum that far, in Farmington. Um, I think our, our better opportunities, um, at this point would be with the inclusionary zone and figuring out an appropriate structure that makes sense for us, and taking a look at our restrictions on the accessory apartments, and then taking a look at whether or not, and then third one would be the detached dwelling units and how that gets structured and what size lots were, we want to start with, and even then, I think that should be, my personal opinion is that should be restrictive on the initial offering, and we monitor it for three-ish years, see how it goes, and then we could-
The plotting.
The detached.
I, I think it, I think people will take advantage of it, in a good way, so I wanna do that.
Some will, and I think, so I think some of the studies that CROG did, so with, um, with that, uh, Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine and the, the survey that they did, I think some of it touched on which community has done, already has the detached dwellings, and how much, how many do they really see a year, from a practical standpoint. Um, and I think too, in Farmington, we'd wanna insist that one of them is owner occupied, right? They are not both rental, one of them absolutely is owner, whether it's the main or the detached, but it absolutely has to be owner occupied, they are not both rented.
I agree with that. They're very nice compared to other towns, too.
Yeah, and I think it's-
You're saying, monitor it for three years, and then, and, and for up to three years, and that, and then letting it go like, just almost, uh, trusting or hoping that it's gonna stay that way, right? Cause again, is that what you mean by that?
My thought is that for the detached housing, um, that we initially start with, say, the R-eighty and R-forty zones, where we've got bigger lots.
Yeah, yeah.
And perhaps can more easily accommodate another structure, another living dwelling unit on the property, and what are the pros and cons that we see from a traffic parking, stormwater management, neighborly management. We get a lot, right, of-
They can't all be misplaced.
Um, noise, fences, you know, there's different things that you all don't, we don't, you're like, our zoning enforcement list is a mile long that we've gotta contend with, so I wanna make sure that we don't double down on that, so that's my thought, is that, is start with our larger-
Yeah, see how it does, how, what kind of complaints come in.
See how it goes, what the problems are, we modify it, do we remove it, or do we say, as good as is? Or like, okay, maybe we can do the R-thirty and R-twenty too, and see. So, cause some of our lots are small, right, we've got some communities that, and we have an R-nine zone, so there's nine thousand square foot, and some of them predate the zoning, I've got five thousand square foot lots. I don't know that I want an ADU, a detached ADU on a five thousand square foot lot, like-
I would never be able to draw, to build my garage, I, my house is six feet from the line.
Right.
And, you know, the garage is about four feet from the other line, so, you know.
Yeah, you're a problem, mom, no, just kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Chin, then, are there, because we have no regulation for it, and it's probably a stupid question, I just answered, but ZBA? Are there like things that come through ZBA, hardships that, like, would fit, like we should maybe incorporate or not, really, because things like this wouldn't come to them, what comes to?
So zoning board of the P L sees variances from our zoning regulations, um, and they see, um, appeals to zoning enforcement officer decisions.
So like ADUs don't real, like, they don't come, okay.
No, that all, all the planning, the way we are structured right now, all the planning permits, right, our ZBA meets once a month, they don't meet twice a month, so from a statutory, well, there's that.
They get canceled fairly often.
Right, right, so, but, um, and then again, you're looking at the pool, right, so the pool of people, right? So, um, if I have half of our, I'll say, labor intensive applications, right, that have, so anything that's a special permit or a special exception, they follow, I believe, the same, if not very similar timeframe, um, with respect to processing those applications, so all the statutory timeframes are the same. You folks are meeting twice a month, right, and it's been late. If I had ZBA meeting twice a month and late, and perhaps not, maybe it was divided, so rather than midnight or eleven o'clock, you know, we were still here till ten, but I got ZBA doing that, like, one, I think we would have issues having the appropriate volunteers
Sure, sure.
For both of those boards to do that demand.
Yep.
I think folks that sign up for ZBA understand the demand that they're getting into, and the folks that sign up for Z, TPZ didn't, but got stuck anyway.
You're really confused, huh?
But, uh, but anyhow, so I think, um, so no, these, this, no different than any other housing application, zone change, et cetera, it would come through, the, the way I would envision this being structured is that it would still come through TPZ.
If, whatever we end up doing, will it lessen the amount of items coming to them, or no, they're not, they're apples and oranges?
Uh, I don't think this would impact them.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I don't think it changes, uh, and in fact, um, anything, if it came through under an eight dash thirty-G, pretty much eight dash thirty-G even bypasses our, our zoning, and it, so it, it definitely doesn't add to ZBA, and it bypasses the majority of what we look at, um, and the inclusionary zone, again, would sit on top, and it would come in then with any multifamily or subdivision housing, again, depending upon how it's exactly structured.
ADU question, of course, any idea, like, how many detached, oh, and I live in a well-established part, but like, my neighbor, actually on both sides, have garages that have, is there, have, has anybody reported their neighbor for letting-
Oh, we have one, we have one that's a repeat, and they actually are bold enough that when it goes on the market, it's been advertised, and we've had to track down the realtor and say, absolutely not, and you will not advertise it as a separate dwelling unit, and we've had to issue cease and desist, but you folks don't-
It wasn't me.
Handle, no, it wasn't, um, but you folks don't have to, but yeah, we have, um, there have been, yes, folks that have rented out a detached unit, uh, for housing, there are a handful, so in the R-eighty zone, you can have a guest house, right? So, that's allowed, again, it's supposed to be for relative, domestic, whatever, uh, same parameters that are accessory, and, yeah, are some of our accessory apartments perhaps being rented out, and it's not son or daughter or grandma or grandpa, or, uh, quite possibly, absolutely.
I was curious to know what there is.
No, again, unless somebody calls us and is going to report on their neighbor, and, and most people aren't reporting unless it's an issue. Unless somebody's really being egregious, um, occasionally, it's the other person that's just a rule, a, a rule follower. Um, but again, if people are just coming and going and doing their thing, then most people are content to let things ride, right? So, um, and I've got enough things, as, my statement is that, that we are not, we don't go out headhunting, we're too busy, we're not out headhunting, but if they, if they call, and there's no way for us to track, I mean, there's no way for me to know without, you know, stopping people.
And we did talk about this at my, around my dinner, just ADUs, that what it were and everything.
Oh, sure, and did you lay it out?
Having to-
You could just sign it and say, yes, it's done.
Having, well, my kids, both are twenty-somethings, college graduates, and they're like, oh, the idea of something like that is appealing. My daughter was like, rents are so expensive, she's still, both of mine are still at home, but, you know, the concept of something that isn't gonna be a shoebox for fifteen hundred dollars, and it might be, and, and my, actually, my brother-in-law, or, excuse me, my sister-in-law and brother have, um, in Stonington, different, I don't know, they, their, their house, they live in the upstairs, and the basement had like a little efficiency, and they're renting it to her boss's mother. Yeah, they need six months, she's here for, and I'm like, that's, well, how those things should work.
Absolutely.
They work until they don't work.
Well, and I think-
Has to be evicted, or-
Well, and then that's, right, that's their, that's everybody's own individual, right, and that's, that ends up, and that's not a, a zoning thing, thank God.
Exactly.
But, um, right, and that's, I think, it'd be incumbent on us that regardless, that it has to be one- But, um, right, and that's, I think, it'd be incumbent on us that regardless, that it has to be one of the units, whether we're talking about the internal accessory apartment, or the external detached unit, absolutely has to be owner occupied.
Definitely.
Um, um, otherwise, I think we're opening ourselves up to a free-for-all. We're getting close to eight o'clock, so I do wanna touch base, um, the work group, there's an affordable housing, uh, work group that, uh, CROG and CT, uh, Sustainable CT have joined forces. There's a funding mechanism through one or both of them, and they are assisting a number of towns. We've got Bloomfield, Coventry, Rocky Hill, Avon, Canton, and, uh, and Farmington. And there might be another one in there that I'm missing. So Garrett and I, and Nancy Parent, and Scott is our, um, TPZ liaison. Although the meetings, the meetings have been during the day, so it's, uh, limiting Scott's ability to participate, cause they're, they're online, but they are during the day. So, anyhow, um, he's getting CC'd on everything.
When you take over the town.
So, at any rate, there's a meeting, uh, this Thursday, and our CROG representative, who's, uh, one of the principal planners at CROG, sent a reminder that, as discussed at our last meeting, what can we help with on your affordable housing toolkit? Whether there are tools, or policies, or case studies, or best practices, et cetera, what can we help you find? And please provide a brief bullet list of some specifics. So, Neil Page in Canton, uh, responded, and then I piggybacked on Neil. So Neil responded with incentive housing, alright? So eight dash two I, which is, I believe, it allows the incentive housing, but they're really the, um, the fee and lieu program. One, he said examples to model the execution of options available under eight dash two I would be useful. One, the setting aside a reasonable number of housing units for long-term retention as affordable housing through deed restrictions or other means, the use of density bonuses, or the in lieu of, or in addition to other requirements of conditions, um, of making payments to a housing trust fund. He also noted his second item were deed restrictions, same thing, many of our deed restricted units will expire, and what are the mechanisms to either renew those, or information on how to set them aside for longer periods of time. His third item was affordable housing demand and target goals. Data showing a need of affordable housing that provides some reasoning beyond the state required minimum of ten percent. Certainly, our housing plan showed that need for us, and we talked about, uh, school district. But he's, is there, you know, he, or how much is the real need for demand of affordable housing in our, in our region? And he's saying likely higher than the ten percent, um, minimum requirement, which is consistent with what we're seeing. Alter, alternate mechanisms of affordability, what other systems are there in regions outside of Connecticut that support provisions of affordable housing? Eight dash thirty G in Connecticut is, um, is a, uh, system that isn't working a hundred percent in, in Connecticut. Maximum resale values, this office has been calculating recently on eight dash thirty G units are upwards of three hundred thousand dollars, which we will see for some of our Snow Bay and Cornerstone, depending on how long, it's the formula. So it's based on the base price, and then the formula on the percent increase of the, uh, index, the housing index, and the consumer price index. So, and then that's the percent increase that they're allowed, and so it-
It's so complicated.
It says, uh, even at the high end, the eighty percent of median income, right? Which is the highest affordable bracket, so you have eighty, sixty, fifty, thirty, right? So eighty is our highest affordable bracket. The eligible income for a two, two-person is seventy-five thousand a year, and for five, a family of five, is a hundred and two. That's a maximum income, so you think about that and a mortgage of three hundred thousand, um, it's substantial. So, so what, his point is that as these continue to progress, some of the math starts getting out of whack. It's not, uh, meeting. So those were his, so I responded, and I said, look, I'm not gonna reiterate that. Those all apply to Farmington, the way they are articulated. I think we've touched on pretty much every single point this evening. I followed up and said, and asked about the tipping point for the inclusionary zoning percentage in fee and lieu. At what point does it become cost prohibitive, except for higher-end, larger developments? And we run the risk of creating a divide between our higher cost and affordable housing. I asked for samples of housing trust language that include the ability to obtain, uh, low-interest, no-interest loans for larger maintenance items, um, so hopefully we don't have to create that on our own, that somebody else has already done that and has maintenance included in their housing trust language. And then I asked about standalone accessory dwellings. There's been some discussion on a, a listserv, which is a separate, um, separate group that we have access to. But more information about how they have been implemented in other communities would be beneficial, specifically lot size limitations, setback requirements, ownership requirements, long-term lease requirements. And I also asked if affordable limitations are placed on them, or if they are perceived as organic. And if those that are affordable, how do they track them? So that's what has gone, and that meeting takes place on Thursday, so, which should put me, we'll see what type of feedback, um, we get on Thursday. But it should put us in good shape to expand that conversation then next week, which would be next Wednesday. So, action items, I will update you on my meeting from Thursday, uh, as part of our discussion for next Wednesday. I will check in to see about commercial linkage fees, and they're, whether or not we can even consider those, and where, how, what it looks like, and, and how we access that. And I'll make a few phone, phone calls about developer forum, um, and see if any, where that goes to have a, a panel discussion from a developer standpoint.
I have some questions, but who was that?
I don't know, I think it was Matt. Matt, what's up?
It's, uh, the linkage thing, I just, I'm in front of my computer, so Stanford does have linkage fees.
Okay.
I'll forward you off the code I found, I'll just copy in the ticket.
Awesome, perfect, thank you.
And, oh, just a question, quick on your action items.
Yep.
The, um, the, the school, at, uh, is that something you're getting extra?
Yeah, no, I wrote it somewhere other than, I gotta do here, thank you.
Looking upside down, saying Kathy.
Oh, yeah, no. Yep.
Now, James get to participate?
He was on, he's on.
I know it's tough when we're both, James, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm here, I'm here, I'm just, I'm just listening in, um, trying to, you know, figure out what we could potentially do here. But yeah, looking forward to further discussions, I'm just kinda taking it all in.
Okay, that's fair.
Light touch, are we saying no light touch, or you want us to read light touch? Are we saying it's not a full light?
I'm saying, no, what I'm saying is that I think if, if, there's different ways to do light touch development. So our ADUs would be considered light touch development. Light touch development, or lowercase affordable, kinda, it's all synonymous, organic affordable, they're kind of all synonymous. I think the message in the light touch development presentation is important to understand what I was talking about with respect to a swinging that pendulum, and making sure that we kinda do our best not to swing too hard, that we try to find a sweet spot. So I think that's helpful.
Yep.
Doesn't necessarily have to be for the next meeting, I think there's a lot, it might be helpful if, um, you know, everybody take a look at the affordable housing regs that we have posted. I'll work with Garrett, see if there's others that are appropriate, um, and see if there's things you like or don't like, um, in each of those, um, cause that'll help if we're-
Burn them all, burn them all, what's that venue?
If we're, ha, uh, if, if we do have, if we are able to get a forum in place, uh, or a panel discussion, then I think it's gonna be important that, right, we gotta make, if they're gonna come in.
Right.
Right, there's only two percent of the land, like, that land is probably interesting, uh, parcels, as you see, like parcels of land to develop on anyway, right? All the easy parcels have already been developed, right? And then it's just like all that sort of, they're taking the commercial aspects of town, and where they see those kinda becoming more residential, and maybe not for Farmington, it's like, now, Farmington people, the, the offices are, you know, this is Hartford, where we're seeing it flipping to residential, so.
There's still like, mm, what's the doctor, in Franklin Avenue, you know the doctor, the retail?
Yes, yeah.
Who went to all the colleges?
Oh, I know.
Because Dunning, Dunning gravel, all that land, so them and Wolf Hall need to get out, essentially.
Oh, wow.
So I'm like, oh my God, what's coming in here?
Yeah, what is going on, hmm.
And the one thing, and maybe this is the CROG answer that I'm-
Actually, I, I heard this, sorry. Yeah, they're doing, um, I forgot, I was just in Dunning the other day, and they were telling me that they're gonna, they're expanding their-
Retail?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Walk-in.
Something I can, yeah.
Well, they have one on, yeah, okay.
So is there anything else regarding?
Yes, I have one thing, I'm, I know, I opened my mouth. So, CROG may be the answer, but, uh, are we picking up whatever was passed as far as like state legislature? Or is that being discussed in the CROG circle? I don't know, like affordable housing.
I read, I read an article in the paper about how a lot of stuff didn't get passed this legislature.
In the current, in the current legislature, a lot of stuff did not, correct.
Didn't come for voters, didn't get-
Yeah, so, the ADUs and the parking requirements and all that go back to Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine. And so that's, CROG did a survey, and that survey, the synthesis of that has yet to be released. We've seen snippets of it, um, but with respect to any new overarching requirements, I'm not, at this point, not aware of any out of the last, so, I think we're fine.
Say we semi-checked off one of the boxes on affordable housing with the parking restriction update, right? Cause we reduced-
We modified, right, we did modify some of the restrictions, yep. So, and I think too, it had to be- Right.
On the back.
Thank you, it was good.
Okay.
Thank you for being understanding.
We're gonna sign off, Matt and James, thank you.
Have a good night, you guys.